Introduce ourselves.
Elizabeth Edwardson, Associate Planner.
Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development.
Lee Tao, Commission Member.
Jeff Maruets, Commission Member.
Katie Bailey, Commission Member.
Steve Scherfroel, Commission Member.
Ryan Austin, Commission Member.
Matt Zachar, Mayor.
Dennis Pollak, Six Word Ottoman.
All right, item, uh, number one, approval for the report from August 4th, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Commission, what are your wishes?
Moved to approve.
I get a motion by Tao, second by Maruets. All right, I got a motion by Tao, second from Maruets to approve the meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and cast our votes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Six to zero. All right, item number two, request from Stephen and Laura Nelson for a special exception to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces on a lot in the mixed-use commercial B5 district and to exceed the maximum amount of parking in front of a principal building at an unaddressed parcel on the southeast corner of Peach Street and 24th Street South, parcel ID 3410788. Elizabeth.
So, um, in December of 2024, a conditional use permit was approved to establish general services on the property. Um, the parcel's in the Woodlands Business Center and it's undeveloped. Um, we've been conducting the review process for the site plan internally. Um, and during the review process, it was determined that the proposed number of parking stalls exceeds the requirement for maximum number of parking spaces on a ground service lot in the mixed-use commercial B5 district. So based on the use of general services and the size of the proposed building, the maximum number of spaces is 11 spaces and the property owners have identified that 30 regular stalls and two accessible stalls will be needed to serve the general services day spa use. Um, Planning Commission can approve a special exception to-
There are four participants in the meeting.
The minimum parking spaces by more than 15%. Um, they are also requesting a special exception, um, to allow more parking in front of the principal building than what is allowed. So Chapter 11 zoning regulates the placement of parking on a lot in commercial zoning districts to ensure that buildings are more prominent along public streets. So looking at, oops, sorry, looking at the standards of review, um, the parcel is 4.35 acres in size. Um, it's irregularly shaped and average in size compared to the others in the business center. The lot is currently vacant. Um, these special exceptions exist to allow more parking, um, just to provide flexibility for land uses that have a special need. And the applicant has identified that that extra parking is a need that they have. Um, there will be a slight negative impact to the natural environment from additional impervious surface, overall neutral effect on the surrounding properties. Uh, the use should not impede the normal development of the surrounding area. And, uh, required landscaping will help to offset the impacts to the natural environment. With that, our recommendation to is approve the special exceptions, um, with the following condition.
Thank you. Uh, just want to make sure Eric Daven is with us by phone. Are you there, Eric?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Commission. Questions, comments?
I'll move to approve the request for a special exception to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces and to exceed the maximum amount of parking in front of a principal building at the southeast corner of Peach Street and 24th Street South.
I got a motion by Austin.
And I'll second.
I got a second by Bailey. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric?
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Item three, request from Badger Land Survey LLC for a certified survey map to combine two lots at 631 19th Street South, parcel ID 3406337 and 3406335 and dedicate right-of-way along 20th Street South. Elizabeth.
The request is to combine two residential lots and in doing so, public road dedication is required. 20th Street South is a minor collector and requires 66 feet of width. Therefore, three feet of right-of-way is to be dedicated. In total, 268.74 square feet of dedicated area. Our recommendation is to approve as the request is consistent with the city's official street map.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments by the Commission? Seeing none. What are your wishes?
I motion to grant the, um, the, uh, combining of the two lots.
All right, do you need anything more specific? Okay, we got a motion to approve.
Yeah, I, we, we do in terms of the dedication as well.
I motion to approve the dedication of the, of the combining of the two lots. Is that appropriate? Okay. The right-of-way? Okay.
Sufficient? All right, I got a motion to approve to include the dedication of the right-of-way.
Second that.
I got a second by Tao. The motion was by Maruets, second by Tao. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Item four, request from Badger Land Survey LLC for a certified map survey to alter lot lines and access Lot 1 via easement and private road at 430 A Street South, parcel ID 3414150 and 3414152. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you. Uh, this request has been prompted from, uh, an interested party looking to buy Lot 1 on the attached map, uh, and that, uh, purchase also includes, uh, kind of cleaning up the lot line that separates Lot 1 and Lot 2. Previously was under the ownership of the, uh, car dealership and so they could access Lot 1 through that car dealership lot. Um, however, with different ownership, uh, city code, both subdivision code and zoning code requires that there be access easements in place. In this case, there needs to be two. There's, uh, ingress egress shown to the north. There's a agreement that already exists for that private drive. Um, however, the, uh, the car dealership needed to also create an easement agreement, which has been drafted, not yet formalized, but will likely be formalized and it would be a requirement to be formalized after the approval of this CSM lot split. So again, city code requires all lots to be, um, on a public street. If they're not accessible from right-of-way, they need to do so via private lots or easements. So in this case, those two easements have been drafted. One exists, one will be, uh, executed after the CSM approval and that will suffice. Therefore, staff is recommending to approve the request.
Commission question or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the request, including the access approval.
All right, got a motion by Austin.
I'll second.
You got a second by Maruets. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Item five, request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids for a public hearing in action to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, Article 6, Division 3, general standards pertaining to driveways. Kearns?
Thank you. Over the last several months, uh, Plan Commission, as you can recall, has discussed gravel driveways. Uh, the most recent action occurred back in, um, July, I believe, um, which approved some driveway changes to the code. However, it did not address gravel or any changes to the hard surfacing requirement with the intent that, um, future discussion would occur. Uh, I believe we, we discussed that, uh, last month, uh, the month prior as well. And, um, since then, Alder Austin has submitted, uh, a ordinance amendment that would essentially allow gravel for all driveways, uh, in residential, uh, districts. And it does not include any standards. So the comments that are included in the ordinance are more so, um, uh, suggestions and/or allow for, uh, some Plan Commission review if situations become, um, you know, more difficult or, um, you know, spill over to neighboring lots. If they become concerning, um, then they would have to come back for Plan Commission review. So that ordinance, uh, from Alder Austin has been provided. I've also provided a memo that, um, identifies some concerns with each of those, uh, I'll call them standards, but they're, they're suggestions. And then a suggestion for, uh, if, if this is approved, just to clarify, um, the surfacing requirement. Everything in blue in the presentation is, uh, requested from Alder Austin. Red are my either suggested changes or my comments pertaining to that item. Since we've started this, I've recommended a phased approach to gravel driveways and submitted an ordinance that included, um, several standards for gravel driveways and only allowed them for, um, accessory structures. So like second driveways leading to a detached garage as well as an auxiliary parking bay, which would be an area alongside a garage. Uh, that, that ordinance amendment did not move forward. Uh, and again, now we have this ordinance amendment from Alder Austin. So again, uh, I've, I've written the memo. The memo's summarized here. I do have some, some concerns. If we don't have setbacks for driveways, it's not consistent with another section of the code, which requires a three-foot setback for driveways. So I think there need to be consistency there. Um, the second comment or suggestion, uh, is regarding containment. You know, while it suggests having containment, um, it says, uh, you know, if we receive documented complaints or observes different impacts, um, and I have, then we can take it to Plan Commission. Um, and I think that's a little bit too subjective, um, in terms of complaints. I think it's, uh, it could be a case of, uh, you know, in the eye of the beholder, if a neighbor just doesn't like gravel and they're complaining, uh, while they're, while the, um, uh, property that has the gravel may be in, you know, compliance with the code, but the owner's complaining, does that constitute then a Plan Commission review? So there's some concerns there that we would have, uh, with the subjectivity of that. Same for number three in terms of suggesting a base underlayment. Again, not a requirement as Alder Austin proposes, but, um, a suggestion. And then maintenance and enforcement, um, I think there would be some, uh, some difficulty in, uh, trying to enforce the code again when these are more suggestions and not, uh, standards that we're enforcing. Um, it'd be handled on a case-by-case basis and then I think that would create, um, uh, you know, differences in how we enforce different cases rather than one standard as previously recommended. So with that being said, staff does not, uh, recommend approving this and does not support the ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Austin?
Yeah, I'll kick this off. Um, thank you, Mayor. So as both a Planning Commission member and an Alder person, I feel a strong responsibility to ensure our policies reflect the values and the needs of Wisconsin Rapids residents, not just mirror those of other municipalities. When it comes to gravel driveways, I believe we've reached a point where the discussion has shifted away from practicality and towards assumptions about aesthetics and enforcement concerns, and I think that's a mistake. Um, the main argument appears to rest on aesthetics and the belief that gravel may negatively impact neighborhood character, but aesthetics are highly subjective and they shouldn't be the primary reason for limiting what homeowners can do, especially when those choices are environmentally friendly, cost-effective, and practical. Gravel is a permeable surface and that helps reduce stormwater runoff and erosion. It's more affordable for many homeowners and when installed and maintained properly, it can be both functional and visually, visually appropriate. So let's also acknowledge that the city itself regularly uses gravel for roadwork, overlays, utility repairs, uh, often without edging or underlayment. If it's acceptable for public infrastructure, it shouldn't be deemed unacceptable for private property when used responsibly. Staff has suggested a phased or limited approach, starting with auxiliary parking bays and accessory building drives. I believe that's unnecessarily restrictive. There's no compelling evidence that gravel driveways pose widespread problems in residential areas. Many residents already maintain gravel driveways successfully and without issue. I also want to address concerns about enforcement. We don't preemptively ban other materials just because enforcement may be occasionally necessary. It's not appropriate to single out gravel based on hypothetical enforcement burdens. So that said, I recognize that my previous motions, which proposed more relaxed standards, did not pass. Uh, in the spirit of compromise, I'm offering this revised proposal and I hope it provides a balanced path forward that this Commission can support so we can finally make a decision on this item, given how thoroughly it has been discussed. So standards, I would propose. Uh, setbacks, while I believe flexibility is appropriate for side yard setbacks, allowing gravel up to the lot line, if a containment edging or fencing is in place, I think would be appropriate. All other, all right-of-way and front yard setbacks that were, uh, brought to us by staff, I would, I would, I would be in favor of. Uh, the surface material, gravel must be clean, uniform graded, and suitable for vehicle use. So we wouldn't want any loose fill rubble or construction debris. None of those materials should be permitted. Uh, containment, as I've said previously, containment edging should not be mandatory unless there's documented ongoing issue with gravel migration. Uh, maintenance, homeowners are responsible for keeping their gravel driveways in good condition, free of ruts, washout, migration. Um, a concrete apron, a hard surface, um, should be at the road, should be required, uh, for the drive at, at the road right-of-way. Um, and owner responsibility, and this is a big one, that the property owner should be trusted to assess their own site conditions, the soil, the slope, the drainage, and choose an appropriate installation method. A one-size-fits-all engineering approach is not necessary. So these standards reflect a more common sense compromise, in my opinion. They protect neighborhood integrity without imposing unnecessary costs or regulations. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a few. Uh, just one, uh, pertaining to what, uh, Mr. Austin just said. So on, you would be compromising on the setbacks to go with what staff recommendations were on the setbacks? Is that?
Except for the side yard. So the side yard, my proposal is if there is containment edging or fence, that gravel can go up to the lot line, just like a fence.
Now, are you talking about the, the lot line, like the rear lot or the side lot?
Rear lot and side lot.
But the front, the front setback would-
Front setbacks would fall in line with everything staff has already proposed.
Okay, but, uh, other than that one, one concession, the rest would be-
Correct.
No, no regulations. Okay. So with that, I just have a few, uh, questions. So, uh, one for the original ordinance that was proposed by staff, uh, are existing gravel driveways and parking bays grandfathered in? So they're, they would not need to alter their, their properties if they're already existing?
Yeah, currently there are hundreds of gravel driveways in the city that are grandfathered. They can maintain them, uh, meaning if, you know, in the winter, there's ruts, uh, or freeze and thaw, uh, they can, you know, bring in, you know, uh, fill and fill those ruts, but they cannot expand the gravel. They couldn't overlay the whole thing in gravel. They can minimally, minimally maintain them.
Okay. And then, so kinda piggybacking off that, so going back to the, the proposed ordinance, uh, today, that was presented by Alderman Austin. So aside from the, the front setbacks, so would someone be able to just spread gravel all over their yard aside from that one front setback?
I mean, if it behooves them to turn their backyard into a parking lot, I'm not sure there'd be many scenarios like that, but yes, I mean, uh, this would be, this would be the ability to place gravel up to the lot line on the side yard, you know, away from any city right-of-way. Correct.
So if I could clarify, the section that, um, talks about the, that Alder Austin has proposed, talks about, um, hard surface of the material. There's a different section within the code that talks about driveway width, driveway location. Um, it's my understanding that this ordinance does not pertain to driveway width, driveway location in terms of, right now, the code says, if you have a driveway, it has to lead to, um, an attached garage or a detached garage. Uh, there are certain widths, um, if it leads to a three-car garage versus a two-car garage. And then if there's no garages, you can have a driveway, um, that leads to nowhere essentially, and there's maximum widths for a, what would be a single, uh, single driveway. All of that's regulated under this section of code, but not this specific referenced, um, uh, ordinance amendment, which is why I bring up in the first, uh, note that if setbacks are requested to be zero or up to the lot line, we would likely need to look at, um, another section, uh, of the ordinance, just to make sure that there's consistency, right? Because you, if someone can have a gravel driveway up to the lot line, is it the intent to allow asphalt or concrete driveways up to the lot line as well? Uh, they don't need containment. Um, obviously, they don't have loose materials. Um, and if that's the case and the intent for Plan Commission and Council, then we should amend that ordinance to allow all driveways, uh, up to the lot line.
Okay. Um, I guess the other thing would be, you know, uh, just how I'm reading this, this ordinance in front of us, I guess, uh, I'm not really understanding how that would be enforced if it came back to like a case-by-case basis to the Planning Commission to decide and then what, you know, I guess what standard or method are you gonna use to, to make those judgments on an individual basis?
The same as any other ordinance violation at this point. It's either reported to the ordinance officer or the ordinance officer discovers it, somebody from the city reports it. If they see gravel migration into the road, basic, you know, um, either neighborly or, or city or, or, or staff personnel, um, making their rounds and seeing the violation and, and then pursuing it.
Right. So I guess I'll just finish by saying, I just, I, I don't agree with that, that approach. It kinda seems like you're, you'll be addressing the problems after they occur rather than, you know, being proactive and, you know, it's kinda the reason we have these zoning regulations and why, why, why would driveways be the exception to any other zoning codes?
Again, we're, we're, we're talking about the specific standards to installing a driveway. Um, and, and I think you're alluding to, I think the only issue that could come of this would be gravel migration. Um, and, uh, is your concern, are you overly concerned about gravel migration? Is that, is that where your stance is?
No, no, no. My, my, my big issue here is, is, uh, the lack of any standards or regulations and, and just making it suggestions only. I, I, I don't think that's a good approach for, for any, any type of ordinance or legislation that, that-
Would you like me to repeat the standards that I proposed?
Oh, well, I've got the ordinance in front of me and the only, only one I saw that that was, uh, that you made the concession on was setbacks. So I mean, that would be the only thing that's in the ordinance, correct? That would be enforceable?
Uh, no, no, there is, there's multiple changes to what I just proposed. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
All right, so beyond the setbacks, surface material, gravel must be clean, uniformly graded, and suitable for vehicle use. Loose fill rubble or construction debris should not be permitted. Containment edging should not be mandatory unless there's documented ongoing issue with gravel migration. Maintenance, homeowners are responsible for keeping gravel driveways in good condition, free of ruts, washouts, or migration onto adjacent properties or the public right-of-way. Concrete apron, a hard surface apron at the road should be required to prevent gravel from spilling into the street. And owner responsibility, property owner should be trusted to assess their own site conditions, soil, slope, drainage, and choose an appropriate installation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Tao?
Yeah, I would, I would still, um, not be in favor because I believe that, um, I think that we have, um, we have expectations for other driveways, you know, whether it's asphalt or concrete. They have to be silt-thick or, you know, have a base of whatever. Um, and I think it should, it should be along the same line with gravel. I'm okay with them having gravel, but there has to be, um, the same conditions that are put on the other driveways as far as, you know, base layers, containment, and all of that. So, um, yeah, I, I don't like it when, when you say at, at the homeless, uh, you know, thinking because it's like, well, I think it looks nice. And then what, you know, what you have a condition that goes on, you know, you don't have anything that, that you can refer back to and say, you know, and, and point out, well, this is the code or this is the regulation that you have to have. It's gonna be hard for the, the staffs to make that call or anyone looking at the violation to make that call. You know, I, I think there has to be sets of rules that apply to gravel driveways. I don't, I'm not against it, but I think that there should be, um, conditions that are put on there, just like any other driveways.
Thank you. Mr. Kearns?
Alder Austin, can you clarify? So with the apron at the road, that's, uh, that's the requirement from the engineering office. Does that apron end at the front property line? And then from the front property line, it would be, they'd allowed to be gravel? Or was it your intent to have a larger front setback?
My intent would be the apron would be the setback, yes.
Okay, so the apron and the right-of-way and then-
Yes.
At the front property line, they'd be allowed to-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kearns, we need a public hearing. We don't need to, we can do that now and then come back to motions?
Correct.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up at 4:32 PM for the public hearing on this issue. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step forward and speak into the mic. Make sure the yellow slash green light is on. Please state your name and address.
Kevin Fangman, 710 Third Street South. I've spoken on this issue before, uh, in previous sessions. Uh, I have the same objections. That if we're making it as, as a suggestion, it's not enforceable as was stated by members of this body. If the homeowner says they like it and it, no one else likes it, there's really nothing we can do because it's simply a suggestion. We have standards for driveways, for all materials of driveway. I don't know why we would excuse gravel driveways from that. There's, there are situations where, you know, it may cross a city sidewalk. Um, you know, nothing to keep the aggregate off the sidewalk. Um, there was a comment made about the size of it. Once it's inside the property, um, you know, could you cover your entire property with gravel? Sure. Would that make any sense? No. Is there anything in this ordinance that would prevent it? No. In, in my opinion, having an ordinance that is suggestions is a ridiculous ordinance. There should be standards that are set for it just like any other driveway or any other building structure on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Second time calling for anyone wishing to speak for or against this, to please step forward. And for a third time, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step forward. Thank you. I am closing the public hearing at 4:34 PM. Um, just a quick question, uh, Mr. Kearns. I see rock yards out there, stone yards. Are those, are those against ordinance?
It's somewhat based on, uh, intent and use. Very similar to, um, if somebody puts a concrete pad in their backyard and it's used for a fire pit or, um, a basketball court, that's the use. And so the driveway standards wouldn't apply if that use was occurring. Uh, so if somebody wants an entire rock yard or AstroTurf yard, uh, it wouldn't fall under the driveway use unless they start parking vehicles on that rock surface. Then it would constitute a driveway and they'd have to meet those driveway standards.
Okay, thank you. Alright, bringing it back to the commission. What are your wishes? Or is there further comments and questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion of some sort.
I would just ask, I guess, we've, we've met several times on this issue now. I mean, if there's any further discussion, have it now. I mean, if there's like specific issues with the ordinance that was drafted by staff, maybe we could, we could discuss, you know, what, what the issues with their version is. Uh, I just can't get behind an ordinance that is purely suggestive and, and doesn't have any standards or regulations. So, uh, unless there's further discussion, uh, I would make a motion to approve the prior ordinance that was put forward by the staff.
So to clarify, you're making a motion to approve the original? The original, um, ordinance as written by staff?
I, I would, given that, I mean, the, the ordinance, uh, notice is such that either probably could be, but because the memo and the ordinance provided in this packet is not, uh, for the last one, I think if it's the intent, um, to review the previous one, that we bring the previous one back. I mean, we somewhat did review the previous one. There were some tweaks made. Um, I don't recall if there was a motion made or not. Um, I'd have to, I'd have to double check. Um, but I think, given the, the memo and the ordinance in the packet were Alder Austin's, uh, I think that should be the focus of the action today, especially with the public hearing that has occurred.
Okay, so we're looking to either, well, we're looking to make a motion and see if it gets a second and then if it passes, or if it dies on the, on the floor, or if there's a motion without a second. So, so you're saying just stick to the one that was brought to the table?
I think that's a cleaner approach and, um, you'll recall, uh, our attorney recommends that the, the motion be made, um, you know, to approve. And then if you choose to, uh, deny that or, or act against, um, you would do so in your, um, in your motion. Or the vote, sorry.
Okay. I think I got this. So at this point, uh, commission, coming back to you, what are your wishes? If there's any clarifying questions, now's the time to ask. Nobody's made a motion yet as far as, oh, I, I apologize.
No, I guess, uh, after what Mr. Kearns explained, I would withdraw my motion.
Alright, is everybody by, uh, raise of hand okay with allowing him to withdraw his motion? Thank you. So, uh, motion has been withdrawn officially and looking to the commission for direction.
I'll move to have staff draft an ordinance based on the standards that, uh, we did, I, I presented here to the commission.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to ask staff to draft an ordinance based on Mr. Austin's recommendations to that ordinance. And I have a second from, who seconded it? Mr. Maroots? Mr. Kearns?
I, I think if, um, if you wanted to make a motion, Alder Austin, you certainly can. I've, I've got the, uh, the changes here. Uh, we can reflect those if, if it goes to council, those updated changes in an actual ordinance form. So, um, if you'd rather there be a month in between and we bring it back, that's certainly fine. But I think with what you've outlined, if that's your motion and you wanted to, um, act on it today, uh, we, we certainly could. But that's entirely up to you.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll amend my motion then. There's no need to bring back an ordinance if we propose these standards currently, you're saying?
With, with the amendment?
Without a public hearing, I mean?
Yep, with the amendments that you've suggested, uh, to the ordinance, right?
Yep.
Uh, that you originally proposed in the packet. Um, I think there were four items that you clarified. I think if you're comfortable with making that motion to approve those four items, I don't think we necessarily need to bring back an ordinance for plan commission unless that's the, uh, the decision of the plan commission or, or you. We'd be happy to do either.
Okay, well, let's put it to vote, so I, I so move.
Alright, I got a motion by Austin, seconded by Maroots. Just clarification, if it's voted down, those four points are not brought in and then it reverts back to what?
So if, uh, right now, the motion would be to approve the ordinance with the amended changes that Alder Austin has suggested. If, um, if it passes, it goes to council. If it doesn't pass, it still goes to council. Council can still call it out and can, uh, acknowledge, uh, the request from plan commission, to deny or approve. They, they can still overrule and take action.
Okay.
But, uh, the point I was clarifying is if action's taken tonight, we will then incorporate Alder Austin's changes in an ordinance form, um, with an ordinance number, with, with your signature line at the bottom, the clerks, uh, and incorporate those four changes for council to be submitted as part of the council packet. Either way, whether it's a recommendations for or against from plan commission.
Got it. Alright, thank you. Mr. Austin? Um, we talked about driveway width though and how we may need to amend another ordinance. Uh, my intention would be to keep, keep, keep the width that we currently have called out for specific driveways. So I don't know if that's something that we need to note or if there would be any need to, to address that other ordinance then?
So I'm, I'm recommending it just from a consistency standpoint. Your amended ordinance, uh, includes allowing gravel to go to the property line, which, um, which is fine, but that's inconsistent with then asphalt and concrete driveways which have a three-foot setback. So, you know, we, we could still adopt that ordinance in that form and then come back the following months, month, and then we could, um, approve or take action on an amendment to, uh, create some consistency, whether it's three feet for both or, um, we, we keep them, or it's zero for both, or it's different, right? Gravel can be zero and everything else is three.
Okay.
Uh, clarification on the, 'cause you brought it up before and it stuck in my head. If, if the old driveways, hundreds of old driveways that are here, um, that aren't allowed to re, redo their whole driveway, they're only allowed to fill ruts, or we're gonna have to take a look at that, right? 'Cause if people can put a new stone driveway, is it we're gonna want the old ones to be taken care of?
Yeah, it's, it's, they'd, they'd essentially no longer be non-conforming in many instances. Um, unless, of course, those existing gravel driveways are, you know, take up the entirety of the front yard, um, and are used for parking in that manner. They may still remain, uh, non-conforming, but the ones that lead to a garage, um, that are gravel currently, they would then, uh, shift from a non-conforming gravel driveway to a conforming gravel driveway. And they would be allowed to, uh, potentially expand. They would be allowed to overlay if this ordinance in this form passes.
So we'll have to revisit that separately?
Uh, not necessarily.
No.
Nope.
Okay. I'm gonna leave it up to you, 'cause in my head, that doesn't make sense. But, Mr. Austin?
I would just ask that we read over the motion or reread the motion. Can, would you mind?
Uh, I don't have your...
I don't have your, um, items word for word. They're summarized here, so I'll have to reference back to the meeting minutes to draft the ordinance. So, uh, if you're okay with rereading them, 'cause you have them written down,
Yes, that's fine.
Be better if you could summarize, please, thank you.
Alright, so I would move, um, that, uh, this ordinance amendment be passed with the proposed standards, which are setback, um, side yard setback would be allowed up to the lot line if containment edging or fencing is, is in place. Surface material, gravel must be clean, uh, uniformly graded and suitable for vehicle use. Containment, containment edging should not be mandatory unless there's documented ongoing issue. Maintenance homeowners are responsible for keeping gravel driveways in good condition, free of ruts, washouts, or migration. Concrete apron or a hard surface apron at the road should be required to prevent gravel up to, uh, the city right of way. Owner responsibility, property owners should be trusted to assess their own site conditions, soil, slope, drainage, and choose an appropriate installation method. And then, like we discussed, um, we're not, we're not approving this that for someone to, you know, fully gravel their, their, their entire yard. It's for the driveway, so...
Alright, so we got clarification on the exact motion and by Austin and Maroots, uh, continues to second that motion. Any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay. Eyes have it five to two. Item six, request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids for a public hearing and action to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, Article 5, Division 16, expansion of the non-conforming building, and Article 19, nonconformities to modify the review procedure for expansion of a non-conforming building. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you. Uh, up to this point, um, anybody who has a non-conforming building, uh, somebody, for example, that has a home that has a 20-foot setback and the code requires 25 feet, if they wanna put a, a deck on the back of their property or an addition on the back of their property that does not, uh, encroach into that front yard setback that's non-conforming, they still have to go through a plan commission review process, uh, which can, uh, extend, uh, timeline for things and, um, you know, more difficult for contractors to push that out. Um, and I think if they're not changing or affecting that non-conforming issue, meaning they're not encroaching into the setback further to create a worse nonconformity, uh, I think that's, that, that review should happen at the staff level. So we're ultimately, uh, requesting a change to allow staff to review, um, enlargements of non-conforming buildings in residential districts only where the addition or the, um, uh, the building improvement does not increase the nonconformity, if that makes sense. The process for plan commission review would still remain for commercial and industrial zoned buildings. I think there's a little bit more to review in those instances. If you've got a building, um, you know, on 8th Street, uh, that's commercial, that has parking and ingress egress on a major thoroughfare, uh, regulating maybe where those, uh, additions occur and having that secondary review of plan commission, I think, makes more sense. But from a residential property owner standpoint, those that wanna put on an addition or a deck on the rear or a porch that don't increase that nonconformity, I don't believe they need to come, come to plan commission. We just approved one, uh, last month and it was more of a rubber stamp, um, for them to do that, but they had to wait, you know, I think it ultimately was like 45 days that pushed their contractor back. And so it was a more of a burden to them, uh, and those residential property owners. So we've drafted some changes to make that happen, uh, and they are attached as part of the packet. Be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none at the moment, I'm gonna go ahead and op, open it up to public hearing at 4:49 PM. And I will ask anybody, uh, in the public, if you wish to speak for or against, please step forward. And a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step forward. Please make sure the yellow or green light is on.
Um, my name's Elizabeth Wayland, 211 15th Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. Um, I think that, um, that changing that to the staff, you know, because it's already confusing enough and that, um, sometimes when you want to change something on, on the house and, you know, if, if they can do that without impacting, um, that non, like you said, the nonconforming, I think that makes sense. I think that's, you know, makes it easier on, you know, residents to improve their properties and, um, makes it a little more streamlined, so, that's all.
Thank you. And I call for a third time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward. Alright, thank you. I will close the public hearing at 4:50 PM and turn it back over to the commission for questions or comments. Once again, seeing none, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve amending the zoning ordinance, specifically Article 5, Division 16, expansion of a non-conforming building, and Article 19, nonconformities.
Second that.
I got a motion by Austin, seconded by Tau. Any questions or comments regarding this issue? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay? Eyes have it six to zero. Huh? Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, yes, to that one.
Okay, thank you. Eyes have it seven to zero. And item seven, adjourn. I will adjourn this meeting at 4:51 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a great night.